Say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now Dave will be gone, so anyways we got everybody else here, so that is good. So I was gonna have Mateo just fence with reading the minutes tonight, because I'm assuming you guys have all gone through it and have it memorized and all squared away, right? For years. I'll take your silence as you're just doing a quick review. I didn't notice anything when I went through it last night, so but. All right. I'll entertain a motion and accept the minutes as presented, this evening.
So.
Okay, Brian does the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Sharon's a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, consent agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have one comment on the vendor invoices tonight, if you look at item number twenty-nine. Twenty-nine.
You up? I'm gonna go south on the hill.
Are you looking at? Paul, you weren't looking at Peter?
Yeah.
Something just happened, because all of a sudden my, my down too. Let's just keep going.
Okay, item number twenty-nine, I got an email from Dave, Mr. Fennel on that he asked me to reimburse Robert Hoffman in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars for, I'll paraphrase this, let's see, it's the domain, he, Mr. Hoffman held a domain for the city.
Right, so he had a cityofhorace.org name, right?
Yes, so Dave has asked me to, if you would pay Mr. Hoffman, and we would then be, have the ownership of the domain. Five hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep, that's, that was his actual cost for owning the domain in this period of time, so we're essentially buying it all so that the city actually owns the, the proper name, we should have it.
Right, and we should have it under the city name.
It is, it is.
We absolutely should, and I guess that's the only unusual item that I have on, on that tonight, everything else is pretty much business.
Ben, just a quick question, where did we install the park extinguisher? There's one out there, and then some in the shop?
Yep.
One in the shop?
Yes.
Okay.
So just two?
There's three.
Three.
We have one, of course, in this building.
Right by the door.
Yeah, and then the cold storage building, which is actually the longer cold storage. Anything else, Sharon or guys?
Yeah, well, Dave. It's, I, otherwise I'll. Yeah, if there's nothing that you're concerned about, other than just that one item.
Motion approved, the second agenda.
With the addition of Dave's, yep. Okay. Also, get a second. John, does a second, all in favors, or, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, that's, motion carries. Regular agenda, I think we've got that squared away, we'll see if anybody's got a last minute change, but we went through all that, so. I'll accept the motion, accept the regular agenda, so. Okay, John does a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Sharon does a second, all right, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried, all right. Brenton, we'll move along to you, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. The first item we have on the agenda for update here is Emerald Ash Bore Awareness Week. This week, starting yesterday, throughout twentieth through twenty-sixth is known as Emerald Ash Bore Awareness Week. NDSU Extension Office and many other partners in the, throughout the state of North Dakota, and actually throughout the country are working to help create awareness of this week and Emerald Ash Bore problems that it could present. So what we have before you is a proclamation, I know we don't typically do those, but just showing how important it is to our community to have that awareness, and then also we just got in the mail today. You may see them around in some of the public right of way. What this is, is marking tape to put around ash trees in public spaces such as parks or right of way to identify ash trees during that timeframe or period thereafter for a week or two.
Right.
That way folks can really realize how many ash trees are present in those public spaces, because we just had a survey done, tree survey done, of all the types of trees in our public right of way, and it's surprising how many ash trees are present, so.
I think they said like sixty percent or something were ash.
Yeah, we're roughly fifty, sixty percent ash trees, and we just got the results, I believe, today. It's when we saw, council member me and I saw them today, so. Example would be like Freed Park, it looked like about ninety percent of the trees probably in Freed Park, and I'm just estimating were some type of ash, so that would make a big impact to show what is currently going on there.
Right.
So we would be discussing with the park board. Participation with them, that just came up just recently here, just before we came up with the agenda, so.
Because they were also making the comment that the Emerald Ash Bore is closer to the border now.
Yep.
It won't be, it's just a matter of time before it gets here, I think they were thinking, maybe in two years we probably will have it in our neighborhood, so it's something to start planning for, and as part of what this forestry group will be doing too, is what we need to do to replace those trees as we go here, so.
Yeah, it's as close as Winnipeg to the north and Sioux Falls to the south.
Yep.
So it's surrounding us.
Yep, just a matter of time.
And we're looking at having some updates, either on our Facebook page, website, some links to where folks can find more information about the Emerald Ash Bore, so they may see that on our, on those two sources.
Yep.
This week, that way we could show effort, you know, effort of trying to create awareness and help spread the word.
Did you?
Oh, you were just over it.
Oh, this one?
There you go.
Yeah.
There's our proclamation.
I just had it out, so. Okay, so you were done with that, right?
The EAB proclamation.
Oh, this is the actual proclamation, okay.
So I take it from the council.
So we basically are looking for a, to make it an official awareness week?
Yep.
Yeah, normally I do shy away from these, but this one's a little bit more important because of how many ash trees we actually do have in town, we need to make awareness of that, that this is coming now.
Yep.
Action is essentially tree diversity.
Correct.
For trying to encourage other residents to plant other trees rather than ash.
Correct.
Well, the other part is awareness, so that if anyone sees evidence of the ash borer, we know that we are notified of that immediately, and we can take immediate action.
Yep. And there are a lot of resources available to help with tackling that issue, so. Would you like me to read the proclamation for you, or just keep it as, it's available?
So we just keep it as available?
Okay.
Unless you want it read?
No. I mean, we're gonna post this anyway, right?
Yes.
We could post it.
For public consumption anyway, so.
We could post it.
Yeah, so it's basically us just making it.
Aware, making people aware of it, so.
Okay.
So do we need to vote or anything on this, or no?
I was gonna ask that same question.
Ken, if we wanna make it official, you wanna make a motion to approve that we do the proclamation?
So the motion to approve the proclamation, but John do it.
I'll second that.
Here we go.
Okay.
Sharon made the motion, John seconded it, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. So there, it's official. Ken?
Okay. The next item we have is for inspection services proposals. As you know, the growth that we're facing, the number of building inspections that we're having is increasing. We're estimating between sixty to seventy-five new houses this year, we're talking residential. We really haven't been estimating the commercial side as much. But sixty to seventy houses give you comparison, last year we're at forty, year before about half of that, so we're almost doubling every year. Where, what we're kicking out for new builds. This is, we had two proposals, like I mentioned, one is from Glacier Enterprises, the other one is from Moore Engineering. What we're looking for is backup services. I do not have a recommendation for you, since these are two very different structures of agreements, what you see, may have seen on the SharePoint, if they're on.
Is the document out there?
I don't, don't know for sure off the top of my head.
I didn't, I didn't see the document out there.
I could, I could give a summary of what they are, Glacier, their approach was, they have an individual that's been in the building trade for thirty-plus years. They're starting to get into building inspections, working with the area townships nearby, so like Warren Township and a few other townships, they're doing building inspections, as you know. Township, inspections for buildings isn't real plentiful for a township, per se. They, their proposal was really to provide somebody that could be basically like an extra staff person, and if we have inspections, or to help with code enforcement, anything we need in those areas, they can help us out with. Their proposal was for, as needed, on-call, seventy dollars per hour. The other one, and like I said, Glacier Enterprises, there's, this is a new ballgame for them, they just started getting into this just within the past couple months. With Moore Engineering, they are obviously a more established engineering firm when it comes to dealing with inspections. They currently do inspection services for many of the communities around us, you're talking West Fargo, they're working out details right now with Castleton, Kindred, so quite a few of the communities around here, they're already working with and doing those inspection services. One advantage with them is they could help streamline consistency throughout all the smaller communities, and including West Fargo, for how inspections are done, that's an advantage of them, they also have, I believe, six inspectors for the residential side, and then one inspector for the commercial side, so they have that technical experience, that's all that they're dealing with, is inspections. They are more expensive, they're, in their proposal, if we use them as on-call, it'd be a hundred and ten dollars an hour. On-call would be to back up Perry, our current staff right now, so if he was out on vacation or something, they could come do a driveway approach, or check footings, or whatever we needed done. The one concern they had was if they were to inspect just portions of a house, not the whole thing, issuing the certificate occupancy could, could or would be a concern of theirs. They were also offering to do all the inspections for residential properties, we could say, you know, for all of them, or a portion of them, we could just say, okay, this house is going to be done by Moore Engineering, and then basically what we would pull in for the permit fees, it would just be passed through to them. Or we can negotiate an, or those dollar amounts, they have negotiated with other communities like West Fargo that have more of them, or some of the smaller communities have laid out a structure to where it just passes through. So like I said, they are very different animals, per se, when it comes to inspection services, but presenting that information to the council, if you would like to have a backup service, what would be of interest to you? We see benefits from both sides, the biggest thing to staff is having that backup, that way staff is able to use their time, like vacation time, and if they're out of office, we're not causing hindrance or a hiccup to our contractors or builders in the area.
I think I heard something.
We already have more on board.
Pardon me?
I thought we had more engineering on board.
We're still having discussions with them.
Yeah.
Obviously, the biggest question we have is the final inspection, the CEO. We, we need to have whoever's gonna be our backup be able to service us in that. To me, if you have a backup that can't do that, it's not really a backup.
Yeah.
Brent, you also mentioned code enforcement, you know, I think that's one of our areas that we could definitely use and help in as well. Was there any type of code enforcement in Moore Engineering's proposal?
There was not.
Do they?
We haven't really gotten.
Do that off?
I, I don't believe they get into code enforcement a whole lot. Might be something they discuss, but they don't get into the code enforcement from my understanding, at least not too much, we always check with them and see that, that, at that price range, it might be more feasible where we just take more to burden of the code enforcement on internally, so.
My personal opinion would be to get somebody, we, we need to get somebody who can do both, and I think it's time to put a proposal together somehow that would handle all our inspections and our code enforcement as well.
Didn't Glacier kind of mention that though, too, that they would be able to get into the?
Yes. They'd be willing to do anything, code enforcement and inspections to help us out, they, like I said, it would be an extension of staff services.
You know, the way I'm hearing it is Glacier is really, is truly a backup, and more, their proposal sounds more like they just wanna take it over. Like, you know, give us a property and we'll do it, but we're not just gonna be a backup, and we're not gonna do some inspection.
You can't, you can't blame them for that, I wouldn't wanna sign a CEO if I hadn't been there, no. We'd both be in liability at that point, I would feel. And you make a very good point about having some continuity, you know, around the area, you don't need to have people building houses and having to relearn, builders, you know, it should be, we're such a tight knit area that there's a great working atmosphere with all the code enforcement officials in the communities, and that needs to continue. But how long has Glacier been doing this?
Couple months, I believe, so.
That's a new.
That's a new ballgame for Glacier, their inspector that they have on staff, he's been in the building construction industry for thirty-plus years, but the inspection side, he hasn't been doing a lot of the inspection side, like I said, so that's the pros and cons, you get either somebody that hasn't been doing this very long, or somebody that has, that somebody has is going to cost more. But with the one that is less expensive, you get more of an extension of staff for other areas too, so.
That's why I'm probably gonna have a couple proposals here in the break before, but now with the fellow, you and I met with him.
Probably about a month ago.
I suppose. That wasn't too long after you came on board. We met with Jeff and this other fellow, and that's when we kind of had this discussion about if he wanted, was interested in doing it, and did he feel comfortable doing it? He did, you know, of course we have to define some parameters.
Wasn't, it should also be, are we clear with the requirements for what we're asking for? I mean, are we, are we just saying, looking for truly a backup, or are we looking for, you know, somebody that can take this on? Like you said, there are two different proposals, and it's hard to compare them apples to apples, and you're getting a complete full service versus, you know, just when you need it. Are we really getting what the city needs, and given the activity that's gonna be happening in the next year, plus?
Yeah, cool. That's why we gotta have this discussion.
I'm concerned about being the learning curve for somebody new, and also who, we're training somebody from, trying to find good words. Us training somebody is a question of mine too. You know, where you have the experience of Moore coming in, is it better off than we'd get, but we also need code enforcement. There's a lot of things we need on that. I'd like to see Brent do a little more work on it.
Well, I didn't expect, yeah, tonight we weren't gonna sit and make a decision, this is to have the discussion about what we wanna do, and then maybe some extra parameters, if you guys would like to have some more things added to what we wanna do, and then maybe get another proposal put together.
Those are the two primary things, right, inspection and code enforcement, the two primary things, and it's also for residential slash commercial, right? Because commercial's gonna be coming, so we, I mean, that would be a question for, you know, for Glacier, can they support any commercial inspection? Do they even have the ability to do that?
And so.
Experience.
And, and I think from a comparison standpoint, if we're, if we're looking at comparing contractors, do we also look at how many hours we would need a backup, and at these rates, what's that cost? Wouldn't we be better off just hiring somebody to do that? And again, it's hard to say, because I don't know how many hours we're actually talking about.
Right, we don't think we, any of us know that right now.
Right. Which is why it's such a, such a question.
That's why we kinda wanna do this on a contract basis, so that we know, because I can't say that they're gonna be spending ten hours a week, it might be one week where they do spend ten, and we don't talk to them for a couple more weeks, I don't know.
Currently, right now, for staff, from YSC, obviously, with our staff, when they're doing inspections, they may be non-stop, all day, dealing with inspections, and then have a day or two where it's quieter. And then it'll be, they'll be swamped for a day or two again, and it's hard to predict what days they're gonna be swamped.
Right.
So that's where it would help. This structure, either one we go with, like I said, we could structure it to be a backup, and we could work out the details with either party to play that role of a backup, to help us assess the workload of maybe a future position or something.
And here again, Moore's providing all the inspection services for the city of West Fargo, correct?
Yes.
So it, it's another data point, right, to, to think about, they, they just don't, to, to your question, do you hire somebody, or do you just subcontract that, so to speak? This is one of those things where, you know, it, it's hard to, for exactly that reason, it's sporadic work, but yet they can spread that work over a larger population.
But when they have a lot more cities also that they're servicing, the, the question is, are they really on call, on demand, as you need them, somebody's gonna be there, and that's, you know, that's.
And that could go either way, because this other fellow that works with Township too, and does inspections there as well, so I mean.
From, from both sides.
It's a good question to ask, both of them to say, what is your availability for handling these pressures?
From both sides, I've discussed that with both firms, depending on the, what they're seeking, you're talking about one to two hour response time in general is what they've been saying.
To us, yeah.
Yeah.
Ross, you have something you wanna add?
And if you mind, if you go with someone, if you go with a company that has an inspector, whether if he gets a better offer. Now you have a company that has no inspector, if you have a company that has six residential inspectors, and they find out that the business is picking up more, they can add another one easily, and have all the certifications required to do the job.
It's a business continuity, question.
Business continuity question, yes, and and I'm glad to hear that you are also talking about, maybe it's time to do just what West Fargo's doing.
But I've also heard, West Fargo's looking at bringing in their own staff for it.
They can afford it? Right. Yeah, we're not there. But I mean, it's.
Well, no, our challenge is that once we give away every permit dollar that comes in, that's not a beneficial situation either, because if we do contract for the, on the more expensive side with more, all the permit fees that we collect are paid to them, so.
What should our permit fees go for?
How does that help us?
What should our permit fees go for?
I don't know, we did a survey, a study, just not that long ago, when we revised our permit fees, but if now, at this rate, we give them away.
It shouldn't be a revenue source necessarily, it should pay for the service of what we're doing.
Well, it should cover staff time, because just inspection, just inspection is not, is not the only thing that staff is doing when it comes to inspection, right? You have the whole process that leads up to that inspection, that is also part of staff hours. And so maybe our permit fees are not high enough, I don't know the answer, but.
The other thing is too, other municipalities do administrative fees separate of the permit fees?
Yes.
That might be something we could look at too, that would cover administrative staff, right, just something we should look at, assuming if we go this route.
One, one discussion with Moore Engineering, they mentioned, working, they're working on the details of Castleton, and Castleton is looking at having an administrative fee tied on top of their permits to cover the city hall operations associated with a permit, so, because there are still, depends how you structure, there's a lot, lot of negotiating how we structure their action and.
So let's get a hold of Moore and see what, you know, about code enforcement, if they have some people that can assist us with that, for sure. And then I think it's availability, you know, for both of them. The other thing is too, to talk to Glacier about code enforcement, if their person would feel comfortable in that role.
And I suppose if there's a third option, or a third choice, which I don't know if there is, but.
We hired our staff as the only other way.
Yeah, I mean, do you have any other questions that we should make sure that they can answer in this next forum?
What would be our cost for administrative fees? I mean, if we could put that on, there would be the.
We'll have to look at that.
Yeah.
Because that gets into that, the timeframe, and how much time is gonna be involved in this, because we don't know, we can guess, but we don't know for sure yet, but. Anything else, Brian, Sharon, if you guys wanna?
No.
Okay. So why don't we just go ahead with that then?
Yep.
Just know, all right.
We'll dig into more detail, and follow up with the council at future meeting. The next one we have, and I don't believe we attach these onto the SharePoint, just because it was fairly simple. We're also looking at proposals for road grading services, one question I was asked was, should we be outsourcing our road grading services? Or should we be doing it internal still, or have on-call backup approach? The reason behind this is because our road grader is on the smaller side, and is older.
It's almost a museum piece.
Yeah, and it's almost a museum piece, so we, Cory and I were talking about that earlier today, how the road grader is a nineteen ninety-three. It's underpowered for when we have challenging roads. I won't call out specific roads for the time being, but we do have some challenging ones that require heavier piece of equipment, heavier, or more powerful road grader, things like that, which both of these contractors do have. Also with road grading equipment, you really have to know what you're doing, and we, fortunately, we do have staff that knows what, they do a pretty good job of road grading right now. However, if we had changeover in staff, getting somebody trained on the road grader would take time. And from my experience working in public works field, a road grader is probably the most complex piece of equipment a public works department has. It looks very simple, but you tweak that blade just a little bit, and you could tear a road up very quickly. So there's pros and cons to it. What we're looking at is, in order to have outsourced complete road grading services, I did not see it as feasible, because we have roughly eighteen miles of gravel road in town, if they spent an hour a week on those road grating roads, we're looking at roughly over a hundred thousand dollars. If we're gonna do that, we might as well buy a brand-new road grader straight up, and bring staff, you know, bring another staff person on, just to be doing some of that road grading. However, having a backup, does, agreed-upon backup, would be probably the most feasible option. So we say, we're gonna go with this contractor whenever we need a road that needs a heavier piece of equipment, or can get, that may, we may need to have somebody out to more frequently than what our staff can. So what that says is, both proposals came in at a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour. One is from Glacier, Glacier has a very diverse portfolio, portfolio, as you can tell. But they have done road repairs for us, and excavation, we've had very good history, I just asked Vance about that at the start of the meeting. We have had very good relationships with both companies. The advantage with Hocum is that they currently do a lot of the road grading townships, is that, is that correct, Vance? Adjacent townships, so they're already on the roads next to us, so it wouldn't be as difficult for them. Probably to get the road grader out here, they could coordinate it with where they're doing roadwork already on the township roads that they're working with. So, similar to some of the other items. So, similar to some of the other items, just looking to see if council has a preference, what you'd like us to do. If I'd have to give a recommendation right now, I'd probably say, just due to the availability of them working in township roads, Hokum would probably be the first choice just because they're more, they're more present.
Well, your proposal is to say, let's, let's hire them as a backup service at this rate.
Work in agreement, work in agreement to where they're on-call as a backup. Similar inspection discussions, but this would be a backup service so we could say, okay, if we need backup help for the heavier equipment or whatever, this is who we're going to call. So you, as the council members and mayor know exactly who is out there on a road other than state staff.
But then we would keep the plan to replace that road grader that we have on our capital improvement.
That would be a future discussion of what we want to do with our road grader. Currently, you know, we mentioned our road grader is a ninety-three, I was looking at values of how much they've been selling for. And we might be lucky to get about ten thousand dollars for that road grader, that ballpark. Yeah. And you could easily spend a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars on a road grader, so they're not cheap.
Plus, we need new tires on it.
Yes, and we need new tires on our current one, which we're looking at.
Six grand.
Yeah, but once you factor in the ma- the labor and everything, we're looking at closer between six and ten grand.
So is a road grader the type of equipment or type of piece of equipment that could be leased? Or are they the type of equipment where your best bet is just buying one outright?
You could do either one typically with municipal lease programs, you're leasing to buy anyways. So when you're purchasing road equipment as a lease, it's a, you're just deferring your payments to spread out over three to seven year time for him to pay on a piece of equipment. A lot of times you could work out deals where you pay inter years, so you get a whole year use out of it before you're even buying it. You could also put them on a rotation program, similar to what we do with our Skidsteer, where we use it so much. Every year we pay, I think, like two thousand dollars or something and we get a new piece of equipment. So you could do rotation programs like that too. And with our savings that we get, being a municipality for construction equipment, a lot of times if you flip them within a couple of years, you could be breaking even pretty easily, so.
But that's not really the question to that.
Yeah.
No.
That was just a sidebar question.
Yeah.
So who are our choices for?
It would be Glacier Enterprises and Hokum Construction.
And we've contracted with both of them previously?
For about twenty years.
Yeah.
Not Glacier, just Hokum.
But Glacier has done quite a bit of work within the city. They also are a horse company, so they are present right here in horse, around Edge Horse. Are they, they're not in city limits, right? They're not in the city limits, are they? No.
Does it include snow removal?
It can.
Oh, it can?
Glacier included that within their proposal, it'd be ten dollars more an hour, so.
Should we do what again?
Do snow removal.
Oh, okay.
Hokum can too.
They didn't address it in there, but since Laris has been neck and neck, it, I'm going to make the assumption it would be identical. Or fairly close, being that their prices are identical.
Yeah, I would, for them, I would just ask if they do snow removal, but that's not the subject of discussion either at this point.
I'd say let's just focus on getting roads graded.
You look at the section tonight, right?
That is up to council. So if you do action, that's great, we appreciate it. We're not tied the hip to any of them, but if you'd like to have a, I know council member fell on was talking about having like a master services agreement and this would fall in that concept where we're saying we're going to work with this company for this activity.
Do we have, are we in need today of any roads that need immediate grading?
Not this minute. We have some, maybe, maybe.
Let your arm down.
I'll, I'll take that, I'll take that as a.
There's possibly sooner than later.
There are roads on a watch list that require partnerships with others. That are most problematic.
I'll sue you for damages to my wife's back if you don't fix it. Well, I'll make a motion to have Brent work towards a agreement with Hokum.
Okay. You can, at the same time, Brian, why don't you just ask them too about the snow removal?
Yeah.
But just, but that, that's kind of a sideshow, but just kind of put that on your list.
I'll add that, I'll amend that.
Okay.
I'll second the proposal.
You, yeah, go ahead.
Would you like me to work on that as well? Because I'm assuming you just want a master services.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And now, that will be the first situation that we've had the master services agreement in place then to where we can start following that.
Yeah, because you know we're going to be using it again, as well get that done.
And you may need a, we'll need a separate one for, we'll need a separate one for whatever, or whatever.
Okay, so John, John's got a motion on the table.
A second.
Okay, Brian is a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion pass. So let's, yeah, and keep us posted on that then, Brent, let's see what we can do there.
The next one. I apologize, we have a lot with different scenarios for council tonight. The next one we have is municipal banking options. On the share, on the sharepoint?
Yeah.
Should be on there. One, one area I've been asked by this, this group, the governing body here, is to look into our banking options.
All bank comparisons.
Yeah. There we go.
Okay.
There we go. One, one area this governing body asked me to look into was our banking options. That's been on, on and off discussion for quite a while, is my understanding. We currently bank with Alaris Bank. What you see is a side comparison of three different banks that we've been talking to. Alaris, Starion, and FCCU, so First Community Credit Union. All three have been very receptive and easy to work with and talk and get some proposals. But what you see before you is comparisons for checking, minimums full savings, other services they may offer and some pros and cons. The pros and cons are very brief and not very in-depth because just even working with them today, working with the different banks today to make sure I had the correct information, if there was any changes in their rates to the market. As you know, with the banking industry, that changes almost daily, it seems like. I do have, Dale Etland is here from Starion Bank, so if you have any questions about detail tied to any of these accounts, especially with the Starion concept that's proposed in front of you, he gladly expand or answer any of those questions you may have. But that's a comparison for the council to consider. Couple areas that were the biggest focus from discussions of council members individually was there are concerns about fees and concerns about interest. Most of them, you could wipe out majority of the fees, if not all the fees, by having a certain amount in your checking account. They, Starion, they look at having a certain amount within your bank accounts, combined checking savings, so they look at it that way. The money that you have in your checking account with the other two, for example, gets you earnings credits. And the earnings credits offset the fees that the bank would charge for the various activities like processing checks, ACH, those type of activities. The one area that Alaris and FCCU really didn't focus on or called, labeled more hard costs and the earning, credit earnings really can't tackle those would be things like wire transfers, which we have a few of those that happen on occasion, but not, not a lot. If we did incur some fees, we're only talking a couple hundred dollars if we weren't earning credit, having credit earnings offset fees. Was, what I saw as very important is the proposed interest rates. Alaris is one point one percent, Starion came in at one point three percent, and then FCCU came in at one point five percent. Now, one thing that you have to keep in mind, that a lot of folks don't realize with a public entity such as us, and you know, Lucas could expand on it, so correct me if I'm wrong, or, or Dale. But they have to be secured. Your funds have to be secured, so if we have three million dollars in the bank, it needs to be protected to some degree. Now, the banks can either bond to secure the money, or they can basically overmatch the money through other securities. So like Starion, they have the ICS savings that they partner with other banks to create those securities. I think Alaris was a similar structure and I didn't ask that detail with FCCU. I didn't get a chance to ask them on that one. But they have to basically pledge those securities beyond what FDIC already bonds it for or secures it for the two hundred fifty thousand. Anything beyond that, the bank would have to pledge, so if they pledge securities, it has to be a hundred ten percent of was in that bank account, so. Some of these structures, like the Starion requires, with the ICS requires a little more interaction face to face with the bank. But based on our banking tendencies, we, that probably isn't a huge deal. You know, we could do online activity, but if we have to go transfer money in person, that typically isn't a huge deal since we're not far away from them. So those relationships. The sweep, basically also make sure you don't write a check that balances, but also due to the amount of funds that we have in the bank account and our accounting practices, I wouldn't be concerned about a sweep too much. Typically, if we write a big check, and Vance could talk about that a little bit more, but if we write a big check, we know about it ahead of time and we're making sure we have the money before that correct assumption, so, yeah. But anyways, like I say, those are different scenarios, this is a big decision for the council to consider. If you guys want to take action tonight, you can. However, it isn't pending, you know, it isn't something that has to happen right away. If we are to switch to a different bank, I recommend that we consider phasing, doing more of like a phased approach where we move some of the funds over and then in a future year, it'd be, you know, in next year, for example, then we identify a new bank as our depository and make an official switch to them at a later date. Yeah.
One question I had was the ACH processing, did the follow them have support ACH processing for our utility only?
They do support ACH.
But the form might have to change?
FCC.
So it's a slight tweak to our import form that we were presenting.
I believe with Starion, we didn't have to change the form, is that correct?
So we do want to have residents sign something that it's okay to take the money. We already have a form in place, we decided we don't need to change, we can use a new form.
And FCCU is checking into that to see if there would be a new form required, but the form we use, which sounds like it was a fairly standard, we asked, knock on wood, the right question.
As long as, as long as we're collecting the right information and the utility software, I'm looking at that as a. As long as we're collecting the right information in our utility system, then we, we should be able to get it owned in the format that would be needed.
Well, that format we got from Alaris, it was just a template that kind of made personal to ours, but.
But we haven't submitted anything yet, have we, or hasn't gone through yet?
I did a test run and it went fine.
Okay.
So everything's lined up to be taken out on the twenty fifth of this month.
So the good news is that Alaris already does support what we have today.
Yeah.
So that's the good news there. And it may, may require a small change to the ACH format for Starion. FCCU, we don't know at this point if they would even support it. So to me, even though FCCU's, you know, kind of has a better interest rate, that kind of eliminates them right away because that's, that's required. Right, that's why, one of the reasons we're doing this, the better interest rate is another big piece of this, but allowing us to do that as a, as a service is another part of peace, yeah.
The other, the question I have is in regards to the 401K and the insurance provider because I see that, that both Starion has that available as does Alaris who we're currently banking with, but FCCU does not. So the question to you is, are those services we are currently using the bank for?
We currently use them for the, Alaris for the 401. As for insurance, I believe we use a separate party, is that correct? We don't go through Alaris for insurance. Okay. Talking with Chris, our representative today, they don't, they get into some insurance activity, but not much. Like they don't offer, it's more tied to specific financial like insurance for like a bond or something like that.
So if we're not using it, we can ignore, kind of ignore that line, but.
But the 401, we do.
And the investment services which are available at both Alaris and Starion would be something that we would then, if we needed to, we can roll those IRAs into, so that there would be just one account essentially. You don't want, you want less, not more.
Right. And right now, we work with Alaris or 401K simple, that's what we work with them on, so. And then you did have just a brief introduction to North Park Hers, you have the council list to go with that route too. So the 401 structure is a discussion at a later time probably too, but it is nice to know who offers it.
The, the offer's there, the ability is there, whether we use it or not is another question.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys are, want to be in a position tonight to, or do you want to sit and look at this a little bit more and ask some more questions? And it's a big move and I don't want to, I don't want to move anybody along too quickly here, so unless you had a chance to digest this a little bit more.
Well, I know, have you had a chance to noodle on this? I mean, what are your thoughts?
Me?
Yeah.
I guess for right now, when I was going over this with Brenton here a while back and then we talked about it again tonight, I mean, I'm kind of partial to the Starion. Go, just because of the layout. And then the other thing is having the continuity with the checks, or I mean with our online payment. And then also with the 401K and investment services are the same through there, whereas the credit union doesn't have that. So that was what I was looking at. You guys might see things differently, but that's what I was having.
I mean, we, we, I mean, in some regard, we have to look at this from the standpoint of what is it going to be the cost to change? I mean, inaction is easy, right? We could say, we're going to stay with what we are, stay where we are. And, and I guess the question is, if, if we get, you know, even if it's a proposal interest rate that we would get on our, on our funds, on the money market or whatever funds we have, funds we have in there, to get point two percent is a small amount of money, but it is, is, you know, chunk of change that we would get, right? And, and so I guess that's really the question is, the benefits offset the cost of transitioning.
My guess would be that, you may not notice it right away, but I would think over time we would.
So are we being charged for the ACH processing today? Does Alaris charge us for that?
No, that's, that's why we're doing it. So we're not really accepting these credit cards right now.
Oh, okay.
That kind of.
So the bank cards, the bank cards are direct checking transfers, those are free.
Checking, yeah.
Okay. I was under the impression that they were going to charge us for processing the ACH file direct itself.
Because I'm pretty much doing it, like I'm making the file and then, oh, okay.
That's what I mean, I thought they would, just by the fact of us giving them a file and them running that process, was that they were going to charge us for that.
Oh, okay.
So, and that's not the case, so that, that's, that's good news. So we're not, so that, that is basically a little playing field between either, doesn't make any difference because we're not going to get charged for that processing.
That's correct.
So I guess it boils down to, you know, do we think we're going to get better financial planning, money management for the money that we have in our investments at Starion versus, you know, what we've been getting at Alaris?
Well, sitting here for four years, almost four years, I know there's one bank on the list that we're currently working with that has really done nothing with us in four years and, and that pretty much is, sums it up for me. And I, I agree with your comments on Starion, you know, absolutely, I think that's, I'd say get rolling with it. Give it a try and see, see how, see what it takes to do it and.
Now, one thing I would recommend, if the council has decided to change, before we would implement any change, we would also work with Lucas to. we would also uh, work with Lucas to make sure we know any parameters, and make sure there isn't any legal ramifications or anything like that. So I just want to make sure you're aware of this, because if you do make a motion, I want you to make sure you include that item in there. Contingent on.
I really don't see any negative. I mean, all, all I see is, you know, better investment management, better interest rate for the money that we have invested there.
Now, but the only thing I'll just point out to the councils, the one thing on here is a minimum balance to offset soft costs are more Starion.
But I think that that's a combination of all of our accounts together, which isn't a difference.
Correct, but I just want to point that out, so if you guys.
But I think it makes a difference in the sense of, we don't have to keep so much money in the checking account. We can keep more money in the savings account, but as long as all the accounts and the money market, I would imagine, together, will represent those accounts. And I guess he can clarify.
And that, that one point four million with that scenario, and we have a pretty high dollar, or high frequency of checks deposited and items paid. It's just uh, to show example, um, but that one point four million, I believe, was a combined total assets of checking and savings.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what was unique, yeah, that was what was unique about Starion compared to the other two, is the other two we're looking at, you had to have that dollar amount in checking to earn those earnings credits, versus Starion looked at as a total package, what you have in the bank with them.
And that's what I think about, instead of looking at the total.
And we run a very, we, we run a healthier balance.
Yeah. So where it should be issued. Ask the council if you guys are comfortable with doing it tonight, or if you want to wait and just review it a little more.
I'm comfortable.
I'd like to.
Okay, then I'll wait for somebody to make that proposal.
Well, you're looking at me, so I'll make a motion.
Just happened to be looking at me there, John. Okay, so John makes a proposal.
With the, uh, with the understanding of working with Lucas.
Okay, we'll go to contingent on Lucas.
Yes.
But, so you, the proposal is to move from orders to starting.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
On contingent with Lucas, okay? And Sharon does a second. Supposed to be a roll call this one. John?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right, there we go. Motion passes. So Lucas, you got a little homework to do then, let us know if we're.
I, I gave him the warning about four o'clock this afternoon, saying brush up on this area, Lucas.
Well, Turkey season's over.
Look at all the highlighting.
We could have waited like you till four o'clock on Friday and told you about this, you know?
Good point. Seems like a lot more time.
Okay, on to the next one.
The last item is comprehensive plan discussion. This uh, is obviously.
They put together on here.
Pardon, no, it's just in the update. So if you go to council update, I had.
Over here?
Yes. And just scroll down to the bottom. Okay. I'm sure the entire council, you guys know the comprehensive plan. You know their comprehensive plan is uh outdated. It's a little over ten years old. Uh, this has been a issue. Uh, since I've been here, I've noticed that's been an issue in every pre-application uh development review. It's been, it's come up at least once in each one. Uh, also, it has come up during plan commission meetings, and even just the general discussions with developers that want to build in our community, and asking us, what, what are we looking for? So this has also been a topic, my understanding, for quite a while with this council. We have an opportunity to team up with MetroCog. And by team up, we have, I mean, we have a study on the books, planned to occur this summer, starting this summer with MetroCog, the horse transportation study. To look at our transportation network, look at our transportation patterns, uh, kind of the whole depth when you're talking transportation infrastructure. That is one study. The budget for that, I believe, is a hundred thousand dollars, which is a, we have eighty thousand dollars of federal money dedicated towards that, or eighty-twenty split. Now, we are able to, I hate to say the word piggyback, but it is kind of a concept of piggybacking, and we can piggyback or overmatch and introduce a comprehensive plan at the same time. And this could go through with MetroCog, they could do a RFP that is for the transportation study and comprehensive plan. So we're seeking out, you know, proposals to, for a consulting firm to do both, instead of just one. The advantage of that is the transportation study, a lot of their findings were like their core background information should complement the core information for the comprehensive plan. So that's why we're looking at a comprehensive plan, would probably be a little cheaper than what you see in other elements of, because that transportation study will be able to help with that.
Well, we might offer one other, that if you, it's gonna be hard to do a total, a total traffic plan if you don't have a comprehensive plan that's current.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yep.
So they go hand in hand, and we want to make sure they mesh together well, and complement each other.
Cause they'll dovetail.
Yes.
When you and I were talking the other day about this, Brent, you made, you made a very interesting comment to me with the dollar value of what this would be, uh, it would be a very good project. That we would get a lot of look from not just our area, but maybe down in the cities or something like that, which I, I think would be just.
What do you mean by that?
Well, it, it would be, sorry, it'd be more enticing to more firms.
Oh, we'd get more bidding on it.
You could look at some, you could get some, some high-end firms to look at this, look at us, versus just making it just a smaller project.
Be, because the total budget would be larger.
Right.
So in theory, you're going to be able to have a bigger audience of potential consulting firms. If we were just seeking out RFP for a comprehensive plan, say our budget was fifty thousand dollars, we're not going to have near the proposals probably. Yep. So the other thing, advantage too, by partnering with MetroCog on this concept, is it could go through a request for a proposal process through MetroCog. So they are kind of a buffer for us. It's been a vetted process through the federal government, so a little more sound, and if there's any kickback of, oh, you went with this for more of this one, then you have a pretty sound defense of, this is why we went with them.
We're, we're getting a recommendation from MetroCog, that who, you know, they would come in, do a presentation, to say, here are the candidates that applied, and here's our recommendation.
Actually, we would be working closely with them of the developing the selection committee. So we would have pretty strong say of everything that happens.
I think we, as part of MetroCog, we would be very much engaged in writing the RFP.
Okay.
Yes.
Being able to clearly identify what we're looking for, and what we're looking to get out of it. And because that inner intra-city transportation plan is so crucially important to us, that whole comp plan just goes along with it.
Oh, I agree. It's a great opportunity.
And they've, they've, they've done so many of them.
Now, in order, for time's sake, um, what we're looking for is just what elements are you, what is important to you in the comprehensive plan, and then if we were to see this as a lengthier discussion, maybe have a special meeting or something, uh.
You mean to define the requirements for what would go into.
What would you like the scope to entail?
Yeah, because we want to try and define the scope, because we can go a hundred thousand, or we can scope down to forty thousand foot level, but we don't.
What plan is important, you know, but what parts are we all, we're all gonna have a little difference in.
I know, that's what I mean. We're not gonna solve that tonight.
Right.
Right, but I guess, I think the point is, is that our, you're looking for, do we need to make a motion to say whether we're going to approve this approach to partner with MetroCog on this?
I think we've already done that, didn't we?
I don't think.
Just on transportation, okay, that was for the transportation.
Yeah, so how does that? If you would like us to go down that route of pursuing this opportunity with MetroCog, we could go that route.
And then, we've been, we've been talking about that for months, and we, we really haven't taken any action to, to, to move this needle, so this, this moves that project along, and we sorely need it.
It's a, it's a tool I get hammered with, the boys of the road plan.
Honey's only needs it, you know, we, we all need it.
We've talked with MetroCog about this for at least the last six months, if not, if not longer than that, about tying these together, so I'm trying to wrap that in here, so.
So they know that we've been requesting unofficially, let's just put it.
So.
Right, and we were trying to wrap it in, now that we're doing that other study.
They'll talk, I'll make a motion, and let's move forward on this. I'm just on the roll tonight.
I agree, I'll second, I'll second that motion, because I, we have to move forward on this, so I completely agree with it. Well, the motion to proceed with the transportation plan and the comprehensive.
Comprehensive plan, and I also want to add to that, Brent, uh, put together what we need to do towards uh, what elements, and what do we want covered in it. I think Brent's absolutely right, we gotta have a a special meeting sometime, or it's.
Yep, define the scope of what's in the RFP.
And all we talk about is comprehensive plan, we just scope it, right, be done with that.
And is that, is that a meeting with MetroCog to help us frame that up?
We would, I would extend an invite to MetroCog.
It'd be nice if Maddox, uh, Michael Maddox. Did he come down? Yeah. Does that, because he's been through this process enough times that he could assist us as far as parameter definition, so we don't go out of scope, or make it too, too, too.
Too ridiculous.
Well, and the, the good part at this point is, we have a lot of the background information that goes into it. Sort of the demographics and a lot of that statistical information has been provided now within the last six to nine months. So a lot of that information we have that can go right into the plan.
Yep.
That would be helpful too.
Okay, so John made a motion, who did a second on that one? Brian? Okay. And I suppose being, there's money being spent here, we should roll call this one, right?
Yes.
John? Sharon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right. I will work with MetroCog and coordinate with Corey to uh, get a special meeting set for that.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right. Vance, April financials. What do we find on the big board here?
I'm thinking.
Load this up just a second.
Vance, while he's loading that up there, did you notice that the March and April, the tax, sales tax change? About ten thousand dollars. Has that got to do with some people filing quarterlies, uh, or some businesses filing quarterlies? Because when I look at the chart, it seems like it does jump up on occasion and go down and up and down.
There is a trend there, I think.
Yes.
And I'm sure it's tied into that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're sitting at two hundred and ninety-four thousand in sales tax revenue.
What, what, yes, this?
We have a healthy general fund, and um, I'm sure you've all had a chance to look at April. If you have, if you don't have any specific questions, let's just quickly go through it. Do you have any specific questions?
Not unless you have something that we should just be watching trend-wise or anything on there. I didn't really see anything, and just.
Let's, let's uh, again, the sales tax is something like, we always like to watch that, but let's move on to the uh, who's driving tonight? Brian?
Brian's driving.
Brian's driving, okay.
Do you want me to go?
Uh, let's, let's just show, you know, the investment schedule is pretty much the same. Yeah, keep going, Brian. Yeah, keep going.
Uh, shoot, I've had this issue before.
Okay.
Where it fails to load it.
Okay, that's okay. Uh, no big, no big issues during the month of April. Everything is moving along nicely, so.
Yes. Okay, it doesn't want to work, so let me download this.
One thing I did notice when I was looking at the state aid, that appears to be more, the trend lines are more this year than last year, which is kind of a surprise, but for the state aid.
I, I have a question for you, Vance, in the, in the revenue section.
Yep.
So where you have April, and then you have year-to-date, in some cases, that April is not included in the year-to-date, is that an error?
Say that again, Sharon.
So if we looked at specifically, let's look at advertising for horse hunting, right? April, we show four hundred dollars, but year-to-date, we show two hundred dollars.
That was a result of an error that we had to write off, uh, which account was that? That we billed and they no longer advertise with us, so I had to make an entry to reverse that. Greenscapes or something?
Okay.
Yeah, good, good catch, Sharon.
That was just a question. I, everything else looked like it was adding cumulative.
Yep.
The, and that did not.
Yeah, that was an adjustment that I had to make there. And I think, I think we're, do we, are we still billing Greenscapes for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So now, revenue for the month seventy-six thousand, total for the year, four sixty-seven, pretty much on board. Uh, let's look at the, the money we spent just quickly here. Yeah, keep going, Brian. There we go. Questions, concerns? I've added a few more categories there, like meals, entertainment, travel, meeting, staff insurance, city staff, employees.
At this point, we're, we're again on pace to vastly exceed our budget.
Well.
For engineering.
It appears that way. Last year, last year I did not split out the pa, uh, planning services. I have, I am doing that now. So that hopefully will make a difference.
So that might be one we'll be digging a little bit more to understand what's driving the, is it just enough sheer number of hours, or is it something else is trying?
Because.
Did we, did we underestimate something in the budget? That that's, just like, if we can, you know, sometime here drill down a little bit on that.
Yes.
To understand better, are we, are we not planning for that budget amount? Or is there something that we're doing that we should be doing differently at all?
It's always a moving target.
Yeah, exactly. But that's, how, should we, should we be budgeting in a different way for next year? I'm looking at it from, how do we budget for next year?
Yeah.
So we don't blow it, right, again, it's two years in a row, so what should we be doing differently? We try and.
So the more we can drill down into that engineering budget a little bit, probably gives us a better handle on what we're gonna be having to budget for for next.
Absolutely.
Next year.
If you want to give me a call or an email, I'll support every number that went in there.
Okay.
Vance, where do we show the MetroCog dues? Where does that show in the expenses?
That would be account number one hundred fifty-one fifty-nine.
Wow. Oh, just, it just shows as dues, it doesn't show as MetroCog.
Yeah, you know, I haven't, I don't have a separate line item on that. Would you like to see that? I certainly could.
Well, are there other dues that go in there? Is that League of City dues?
Yeah, we pay League of City, we pay North Carolina Road Water Association, but those are a hundred bucks, two hundred bucks, but MetroCog is the big one. I could break that down.
I mean, I don't know that we need it broken out, but if, that would be really a question for, for everyone if we wanted that much detail, but I think we can just ask you if we need that kind of detail.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep. And the um, and then the next schedule will be the list of disbursements. I'll keep going. Okay, let's take a quick look at, there's our enterprise fund that we watch very closely. Uh, we're gaining ground on that, and I think tonight we're gonna talk about raising the rates again, so we should be able to bring that into line here sooner than later. The uh, the last scheduled, Brian, is the list of disbursements. You guys can look at that one if you want. What I did not include tonight is, again, we went with Black, uh, Black Mountain Software, and I haven't put in the delinquency list yet. I'm still working on, on how to do that, but there will be a, a big time effort here coming up real soon to take care of our delinquencies, so.
Okay.
So. And I'll make a quick comment. Uh, the auditors have left, they've left the building today? I'm, I'm thinking they will come back for one half-day, if things are going well. Um, I've had a lot of help from Matea, and I've actually had a lot of. Um, I've had a lot of help from Mateo, and I've actually had a lot of help from Perrin, too, he's done a nice job putting a lot of stuff together for us. Uh, there's still some loose ends, there's some schedules that we need to submit to Widmer Row, which we will accomplish this week. I'm waiting to hear back from two or three attorneys regarding pending old lawsuits and the status there, where we're at on that, and they will be, uh, footnoted and written up as to if there's any progress and there hasn't been in the audit. Now, if they're done with the fieldwork this week, it will, I would expect the audit reports to come out mid to late summer.
Well, it'll take, take them a couple months.
It does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody got any more questions on the April financials, or is? Okay.
Please call me or text me or email me if you have any questions at all.
Okay.
Sounds good Vance, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Lucas, I guess you're up here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, first off, thank you everyone for coming to the open house, uh, last week, it was nice to see you all there. Oh wait, one person showed up. Wow, thanks a lot, guys.
Some people work for a living.
It, it was after work, any whoozers? Fall Acres Edition Final Plaid, was approved by the Planning Commission at their May eighth meeting. Um, tonight we'll be having a public hearing for the final plaid, I sent this, uh, last week.
Which, which document is this, Lucas, the final plaid?
I, yep. That is correct. And so there's a more current one that doesn't have the preliminary on the bottom, like it shows on the bottom, right? Uh, but there's been no, uh, changes to actual lots.
Actually, there is a change from the final, the, from the preliminary to the final.
Same with the straightened up.
Straightened up the, uh.
But it's done now, isn't it?
Did you include that one?
I just included this.
Okay.
You got the right one?
I think there's only one, I, I, as far as I know, I don't see one.
Yeah, that's the final.
Yeah, there you go.
This is it?
That'll do it.
Okay. Sorry, we opened three times, third time's a charm. Still says preliminary on it, is that the one?
Just ignore that, please.
It's what?
Just ignore that.
Okay.
It represents what the final will be.
Okay. So, this will open up for a public, uh, hearing, anybody here to discuss the Fall Acres Edition Final Plaid? Any comments, concerns?
That little square in the bottom right corner of it, of it, is land dedicated to the city, uh, it'd be an extension of sixty-ninth Avenue should that ever be necessary.
Okay.
So is this owned by somebody else before, or what's?
No, it's, well, it's all part of their land, but in this plat, they're dedicating that little square to the city, which would be a continuation of sixty-ninth Avenue.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Should the peo- should the people who own the land over there to the east ever decide to sell it and get it developed?
This would be potential bridge across here.
Nope, nope.
Well, you're saying over here?
That little.
Yeah, right there.
I know, but you, if they're, if the people in here want to develop.
Yes.
Okay.
And there's some unplanted land down below it also.
Right in here.
I see that.
Not there, but.
Right.
Oh, here.
Right there.
Okay, so not hearing anything, I will close the public hearing. And, uh, anything else we need to do there, Lucas?
Hold on, approving the final plaid.
Okay. Did you guys see anything on there you're concerned about or anything? Let me see, any other things?
This was approved by Panayazoni?
On May eighth. With no issues.
So then I'll make the motion to approve the final plaid.
Okay, Sharon makes a motion to approve the final plaid. Brian does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, we'll move along. Next up.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next item I have is, uh, actually a variance for that, uh, property. Councilman Schmidt, I sent this as well, for the same, I think variance application documents.
It's application documents, and I would like to.
Oh, here, sorry, this is very. There you go. Oops.
And so, yeah, what, what they're requesting for this variance is basically a variance with the, uh, side yard setbacks. The way it's, their lot's just kind of situated funny, where they're gonna put the house, and once considered the front and, and the rear yards, they're requesting that their, um, side yard setback be not, uh, fifty feet and instead be thirty feet on lot two. And so if you scroll down, there should be a, a drawing of what's going on. There you go.
Yeah.
And here's a list of reasons as to why they are requesting the variance.
Okay.
And again, this was the Republican hearing held by the Planning Commission on May eighth, and it was recommended for approval, um, at the Planning Commission.
Okay. All right, so we'll open a, uh, public hearing tonight on the Fall Acres Edition variance. Anybody have any, anybody here to comment or talk about the, uh, variance? Russell, I'm assuming you've gone through this and, and obviously have any concerns or we wouldn't be sitting here this evening?
Yeah, the, uh, they have a variance, you have to have a hardship, and if you notice the shape of his lot is the hardship. And where the variance actually happens is up where the two lots come together. That's, that's where.
Right?
Yes, right in there. So instead of a fifty-foot setback, he'll have a, uh, a thirty-foot setback. The other lot actually, because of its, its zoning, will have a twenty-five-foot setback in that same area, in that same area.
Because one's residential state and the other's suburban residential, so they could have animals?
So, so they own both lots?
Brothers, they are.
Two brothers.
So they won't have problems with the neighbors?
They might.
Only at Christmas, probably, something goes wrong.
Well, you know where their neighbor to the right is, is the father.
So, hopefully there won't be problems.
Then there won't be any problems, he'll keep the peace, so, all is well there.
I have no problem with Grant, so I'll make a motion. Yeah, I'll close the public hearing, and there wasn't any comments per se. Um, any issues?
No.
No, Brian?
No.
All right, so I'll accept a, uh, motion to accept the, uh, variance.
I will do it legitimately.
So John does it legitimately, uh, motion, can I get a second?
A second.
Sharon does a second, then all in favor say aye. All right, motion carries. All right, to the next one.
Mr. Mayor, the next item I have is the second reading of the rezon for Visto Industrial Third Edition. I sent this one, and I even color coordinated for you.
That is so nice.
That's cool.
Look at that.
When you bring out the crayons, that is impressive, man, I'm telling you.
I did.
The coloring, you really think, it didn't stay in the lines, it's very.
Yeah, it's actually harder than it looks with a highlighter. So there it is, we find, everything is described, and it's described through, uh, the plating process, a proposed plaid.
Kelly, what do you think, did you do a good job with the crayons?
Okay.
How's this coloring, is it okay?
Good.
All right.
So like I said, tonight, um, would just be the second reading of the rezon, and it's to rezon it as you, uh, had previously requested, so there's some commercial involved.
Yep.
There's a.
Well, you can three colors.
Retention pond.
Retention pond, yeah. Should've, should've used blue there, though, not that purple stuff.
That's drain twenty-seven.
I know, but. So if we would leave this a storm retention, this would be potentially, you wouldn't be able to develop this area. So this is kind of lost cause here.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Just this one?
This little chunk of land right here, so this would be usable, but everything here would not be.
There would have to be setbacks so far from.
Right, because you can't develop inside this zone here anymore.
No.
And can you, you can't grow up to where that line is for the drain twenty-seven?
It's what I can't.
It's one of those, it is what it is, right?
Yeah.
Okay. This looks like what we requested from last time, guys, so unless you got any other comments, and I think this is a dumb deal, John, is any?
Do you need someone to cover the crayons, or?
No, the, the purple, I'm sorry, I apologize, it was over here at last meeting, the purple highlighted is retention pond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lucas wrote his code at the time.
Right, and that's drain twenty-seven going through there.
Correct.
So a dumb question, why do we have to have retention pond if we have drain twenty-seven?
Part of your runoff requirements, pre- imposed development.
Drain twenty-seven couldn't be utilized more on that?
I don't know hydraulics behind it, but that's, was discussed with Kelly, too, to put that pond, they have a pond in the first phase, and a pond in the, did he call that the first phase? First edition, you have a pond in, the second edition has a pond in it, so.
I don't know, Kent drew it, and it's, it's large, it's eleven acres, the first piece is two acres. Phase two, I believe on the road we could just work on splitting what the actual size is together. After the last meeting, Kent had me that in about three hours, so it doesn't need to be eleven acres, I think he was gonna complete some hydraulic.
There's a possibility that you could develop that area.
Some of it.
Some of it.
Some of it, some of it.
I never just stayed the same pattern, he put it as eleven, it is very large, and also make that community fishing pond as expensive pond.
An interesting location for the fishing pond, too.
But the back part, that green.
So put your canoe into the water, so.
That area back there, I don't see, uh, become, the setbacks, you'd never be able to build that area.
Right.
Someday the city parks wanted it to.
But you technically own this, this whole chunk, I don't.
Yeah, we own everything.
Up to this line?
Oh, yeah, that line all the way up to the lagoons, so.
Okay.
And what's wrong with that?
We have to address it someday, because I think there's some good opportunity to do something.
Okay.
Well, row of two would be a fourth here.
That's fourth of.
This street right, this would be a street right here.
Is that, isn't that connecting, wouldn't that ultimately connect to the truck, or just to the further rivers?
Yes, that, that's the plan to get.
That was the plan, right, to get, to hook that all up?
To, to go, yeah, because once you have it there. Anyway, but anyway, we're not, we're not.
All right, so we're on the second reading.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, second reading, okay, Brian makes a motion, John does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next.
Mr. Mayor, the next item I have is the, um, that water rates and charges ordinance that adds to it the fee for vector control and the fee, um, for the forestry advisory committee, it just references it along with the other utility fees that the city charges for. That's the resolution, Councilman Schmidt, there's a separate ordinance.
Oh, you want to see the, the actual ordinance?
Yes, because we have to, you did first reading at your last meeting, so this will be your second reading.
It's the twenty eighteen oh eight, is that the one? Expect to control it, forestry.
I think it's twenty eighteen, I was there.
Vector controls, the bottom one, it's the last document in your list.
It's not, you had it. No, you were, you didn't go far enough, no.
It's the last, very last document.
Oh, this one?
Yep. So, yeah, like I said, all it's doing is just referencing those fees, that way it's in your ordinance and it's not just a resolution that the city council can just amend it in time.
Yeah, so.
So anytime it's add, anytime we add anything to that utility resolution, we have to go through this process to modify the ordinance.
We, no, no, this is just referencing that the city has those set up.
Exactly, but that's the point.
So you're saying.
We have to modify the ordinance to say that the forestry utility will be there to where the, the resolution will actually separate.
Correct, which can be amended a lot easier.
If we come up with a, let's just say a stormwater, stormwater utility fee, we would have amend this and the resolution.
And I like it here, it could be, like the forestry one, that's in that chapter, chapter three oh three that we created, but I like having it here, too, so it's in one place, you're seeing all the utility fees that the city is charging.
I agree. I agree, it's the right thing to do.
So that's all this one does.
Do you remember Dave was talking last time about putting some of this stuff out there on Facebook, did we ever do that? I don't think we did, right, or up on our? Yeah, okay, just.
The resolution was revised the next day.
Yeah. So, that's fine, I know Dave was talking about it.
Yeah, I know, I don't know where it went. No, you say that, I didn't get posted.
Well, I think we were changing something.
Yeah, we were.
Oh, we did, we did, the changes to us, so that's, we, we should have posted the revised after the change.
Okay, so can I put this new, not this ordinance, but the?
The red, well, yeah, that's next topic.
When we get to the next topic.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance change, right? I can make a motion to approve the ordinance change.
A second.
Okay. Brian does a motion, Sharon does a second, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
So now that, that ordinance will get published in the paper because of a fee involved.
Yep.
So then after that publication, which is on Monday, then it's, uh, effective.
Okay.
So the next one, continuing with ordinances, is the city administrator ordinance. As you obviously know, you created a city administrator position, so what we did was create an ordinance that references that position, and, um, sure. So that's all it does, I, it's, the position would be an appointed officer, uh, much the same as the city attorney and the city engineer, and it's now you have a city administrator.
Lucas, what I was gonna ask you on that, I don't know if it's gotta be in the ordinances, or if it's just something that's a policy thing, but as far as like signing legal documents, he, he can sign some, too, I mean, the city administrator has the capacity to sign certain documents in lieu of the mayor's signature, correct?
Yes, I, I think that would be something that's separate where you, you cap it basically, like if it's through contracts, then you say has the authorization to sign contracts up to.
That's what I was gonna ask, yep.
Don't know if you'd want that, um, in the ordinance in case that.
I, I didn't think so, but I was just gonna ask because I didn't know, I didn't.
So that would be like a resolution authorized in the city administration, so you're signing contracts up to.
So I was looking through West Park with stuff, I didn't see anything in there, that's why I was gonna ask you where that might wind up, so, okay. Sorry, didn't mean to go off track here.
Right.
So you just need a motion.
It's, it's up to the, the city council, if you guys want to do the first reading, you're absolutely go for it, if you want to read this and analyze it further.
This is pretty boilerplate.
I was gonna say it's pretty boilerplate, so I didn't have any issues with it.
There's nothing, this is just to make it formality.
Right.
Correct.
I'll motion to approve the first reading. Okay, John makes a motion to approve the first reading, can I get a second?
Second.
Sharon does a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries and we'll go on to the next.
Now, Councilman Schmidt, we will bump to your resolution.
I've been waiting.
I know. It's exciting.
That's why it's last.
Exactly, I've opened that like fourteen times, I'm, I'm trying to get the most red document on to, you know, trying, trying to trim that document.
Just like a little kid, I tell ya. All right.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Mayor and council, the resolution amending the utility services, uh, fee schedule. What was added was the vector control, um, one dollar amount, and then the forestry one dollar amount. And then, uh, at the request of the council at the last meeting, we removed, um, some of those sections, uh, referring to the trailer court. So it was water, trailer court bill to land order, that was removed, sewer, trailer court bill to land order, that was removed. And then surcharge for the trailer court, uh, water tower and lagoon maintenance, that was removed. And so now that the ordinance is in place and this resolution has, I believe, all of the fees. Now the council can approve or modify, and then if it desires, choose an effective date.
I do have one thing, when we accept credit cards, um, Dave wanted us to have a cer, like a.
Through the surcharge.
Surcharge.
But is that, that fee is a one above this, so this is just the utility rate, how they choose to pay for it is a separate fee schedule that we would set outside of this, correct?
So on that payment sheet that they have, just put a little asterisk and say, payment by credit card, go from a three, three dollars, that's the charge.
Yeah.
Right.
Would you put that on here?
No.
No.
See, I don't put that here, I think we put that on our rate schedule.
Yeah, on that, on that form that people have to sign on.
Yep, okay. I don't know, this is what we've been chatting about, guys, so I don't know.
Glory, hallelujah, so I guess the question.
We gotta move down.
Is, um.
Start date is probably the big year.
That's, that's the big question, so do, should we approve the resolution first?
Yep.
I think we have to do that, so make a motion to approve the resolution, uh, utility rate resolution.
Okay, Brian makes a motion to approve the utility service fees. Get a second? I like the pause.
Romantic pause.
Okay, John does a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, good drama, thank you. All right.
Kinda let him.
Yeah. Make him sweat a little bit.
He's trying to make me sweat, I get it, I get it, it's all right.
All right, so the next thing is, we wanna implement these, we wanna coordinate this with the new water meters, or are we gonna do this ahead of schedule?
Matt, and Brent, I'm gonna look to you guys to make a recommendation on this, because it's basically our city's ability to apply these rates. And we, we right now don't have that ability if somebody doesn't supply either, correct?
I think the biggest issue is if we apply the new rates, we would have to have a rethought through approach of max bill. Because right now we have a max bill of ten thousand gallons, and that's fifty-six. So, we'd have to revisit, you know, what our max bill would be. However, the sooner you implement this new rate, the sooner we could stop our deficit, or slow our deficit or stop it.
So the real question is.
Every, every month that goes through.
I know.
We're getting a little deeper and deeper, so this wouldn't stop that.
So this plays into the next question of, when do we, do we have a projected date, when we think the utility meters might be online?
The bid's out now, right?
Bid's out now, open bids, first part of June, give them, uh, construction, I think we had, September was the completion date for that project, just to get them all installed.
My opinion is we should wait.
To reduce the phone calls?
Well, unfortunately, I agree too, that we should probably wait until we get all these meters online, because this is gonna be a big enough change that we wanna implement this with the correct hardware, in my book.
So, do we, do we throw a stake in the ground, say October one, these dates go into effect?
Sounds good.
Is that reasonable, Jim?
I think so, yeah. I will find out more with open bids, but, uh.
I agree, I agree, Matt, it's just, yeah, and, and now it gives us more opportunity to raise awareness.
Yes.
You know, through horse happenings and everything else, I mean, just by the number of people that complain about this stuff, we should probably make sure that this is a horse happenings and maybe consider a separate mailing. You know?
Well, because it's a two-fold thing, we've got the fees and we got the water meters, people gotta be aware that the water meters are going to be replaced, or some might have an initial installation.
Because just by the number of people that ask about those things, you're either not paying attention to horse happenings, or they're not paying attention to the website or anything else. The only thing they look at is if they don't get a piece of mail in their inbox, they don't know what, blows my mind.
Are there any fees in this schedule that it would be relevant and pertinent to have in place sooner than October one? For example, when you look at the Rivers Edge residents whose fees are going down quite substantially, would that not be important enough to implement sooner rather than later?
Actually, their rates are going up, I mean, the seventy-one dollar was incorrect, that, that's fixing, that we, we had calculated the seventy-one dollar amount, which was incorrect, which we caught, and we're revising it to the correct amount. So their current rate is like thirty, thirty-six or thirty-eight dollars, something like that.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that, but.
Yeah, it, it's right now, ballpark, it's in the mid-thirties, so their rate is actually going up.
Doesn't look that way.
It doesn't look that way, so if you look from the last resolution to the, the middle one that we approved, where we did put a date, effective date, it went from thirty-six to seventy-one. And then we, this is basically a combined.
I would just say to avoid the confusion, all this happens at exactly the same time, otherwise we're gonna cause confusion. It's gonna cause trouble billing, it's just gonna be more of a mess.
I agree, Corey, I agree.
Yeah, we'll just.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I wanna just have consistency, so October one, everybody's aware that everything's gonna change.
Problem is, is it, it costs us as a city, and all of a sudden, we are more on the hole, so.
Yep, I know.
We're just gonna have to bite the bullet this year and recognize that we're gonna lose money again this year, so.
Well, I think that's.
If we get that call from North Dakota Public Finance Authority, we'll have to let, pay for forgiveness.
They know what we're.
We're trying.
They know we have a plan.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Then that's all good.
Yes. And we can document anything we wanna know.
So at least now we've got.
Yes.
The plan approved, and we're putting an effective date on.
All right, so do we need a motion to say that we're gonna do an October one go? Okay, so let's do that, so let me make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Sharon makes a motion, we have an October one deployment and rock and roll with this, uh, schedule. Is that a way to put it, Lucas, or you want some other wording? You can't get that look on your face, Larry.
Put that in the middle.
Sure, go ahead.
Rock and roll date.
Yep.
So when can we post this in horse happenings?
After we get done with this.
You can post it whenever, just put proposed, yeah.
And we, and we, well, but, let's, let's go, let's go on the date, let's go on the date.
Sharon made a motion, so October one, Brian did a second, all in favor say aye.
Hold on, the only comment I'd like to make is, you, you hit the nail on the head about how we've lost money in years past. I mean, none of us are in favor of raising rates, but the reality is, is that.
We have to.
We have no option.
If, if we don't raise rates, we keep going deeper and deeper and deeper in the hole.
Yeah.
So, it, it's not, it's not a choice.
No.
The rates are, are going up, because we can't keep losing money.
Right.
And operating in a deficit, that's.
Not in your water and sewer, that just, that doesn't work.
In essence, we're, we're funding water and sewer services for city residents from general fund, from someplace else.
And we've been doing that how many years?
Uh, at least four years, I believe, at least four years we've been funding subsidizing water and sewer, which.
Considering the level it's really in this state, that's not realistic.
Right, correct. So.
So now we can go?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
So we will begin publishing this.
And my office has a clean version of, of this, since it's always something's in it.
Yeah.
Can you email that to me?
Yep.
Because we need to start getting information out there for everybody, so.
So, yeah, so you, you'll fill this out with, I'm assuming this would be my name on here?
Yeah, we, that's, yes, we do all of it, it's advanced, I'm talking about the actual resolution.
Okay, but then we, now we can update this with the October one.
Yep.
We can, so we can finalize this document. Okay, that's even better. Okay?
Six months, six months from now, we'll be in good shape.
All right, well, yeah.
A year from now, we'll be in.
I go six months, Sharon.
I hope you're right.
All right, you're optimistic, I like that. Lucas, you good to go then? Nothing else?
I am done, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time.
Perfect, thank you much. All right, Jim, you're up.
All right, Mr. Mayor and council, first thing on our agenda tonight is the, uh, considering water street improvement district two thousand seventeen four, Maple Grove subdivision. Bids were opened last Thursday, two o'clock, City Hall. I sent out a summary of this via email after, it was done after the agenda was overdue, but I did send out an email on that. We received two bids, one from Earthwork Services of West Fargo, and another bid from Batumis Paving of Ortonville, Minnesota. Uh, Earthwork Services was the apparent low bidder at two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars, seventy-five cents for the base bid. And for alternate number one, they had an additional one hundred and six thousand, four hundred and three dollars and twenty-five cents. The, uh, base bid consists of the grading, the drainage ditches along the lot lines, doing some pond excavation, putting in the aerator in the pond. We have concrete valley gutters across the road where they're currently not, and the water is conveyed across them. Ditch grading along the, like I said, along the lot lines. Alternate number one lines the, if you go to the next page, Brian, alternate number one lines that ditch with concrete.
Did you want, did you want this?
Uh, you can, you can, you can have that one up, the diagram was what I was talking about now, so. Uh, that lined in red there, as your current conditions along there are basically cattails. It's, uh, doesn't drain real well, so the option was sought out to line that with concrete. And like I said, that's an additional one hundred and six thousand, four hundred and three dollars, twenty-five cents to do that to the contract. So, in comparison, uh, the base bid of two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars, seventy-five cents was about two and a half percent less than the engineer's estimate of two hundred and seven thousand, quarter, fifty, fifty-six dollars, fifty cents. And the base bid, and all, base bid, the alternate was about seven point seven percent lower than the engineer's estimate. So, uh, good numbers, we did get a couple, a couple bidders on it, so that was good, we didn't get any last time this was bid, so that's an improvement. This area is kind of Councilman Fendlon's area, so I don't know if he's reached out to any of you before with his wishes, I did answer a couple of questions that he's had. Just, uh, his question was what was the original cost estimate, and that was a hundred and sixty-two thousand was what the number that was gone advertised for, through the engineering report. And that did not include any pond excavation, aerators, or street signs. So you can see the pond aerator, the excavation for pond, excavation was forty thousand dollars, and the aerator was almost nineteen thousand, so we're right in the ballpark when you take those two, take those two figures on. So, um, I think you got good numbers here, and, uh, I would recommend that you, uh, award the project, I think it's long overdue for that area, and everyone's been kinda falling apart since.
This has been, this has been a project that we, it's on the Captain Brewin' Plan list, so it's up for, uh, for this year anyway, so I would make a motion that we approve Earthwork Services for, uh, the bid.
Do you wanna do a base bid and alternate to concrete line that channel, or do you, you got two options, you can award the base bid, or you can award the base bid plus the alternate to award to concrete line that ditch in the back. Uh, my, my thoughts on the concrete lining is there's an awful lot of, uh, ditches in, in the, the city horse that we get a lot of complaints on, the city hall gets a lot of complaints on, and one of the comments was they'd like to see a concrete line, and this is in a different part of town, so got the opportunity here, it's, it's a, a good cost, so.
This wasn't, this is somewhat, was it out of scope, I guess, did we, we went to the residents, did they recognize? Because we, we originally talked about fixing the roads, this is an extension of that to also fix the drainage.
We did have the drainage improvements in the, in the original, this was an alternate. Um, this was, I wish Councilman Fendlon was here to kind of discuss some of what was discussed with the residents, so, um.
But this, this was discussed with the residents?
Well, i- if it was, it was done with, with Councilman Fendlon, I, I didn't do any, uh, any type of that, he kinda went it all in, so. Is he gonna be at the next meeting?
So, when it came to the project and the bid.
Yep.
How did that part become part of bidding?
It was considered alternate, just because it had come up during the bidding, during the design phase, that we should look at doing that, just because of all the areas and towns that we've gotten concerns about that, and that was one of the options for that area to control the cattails, kinda keep it a little more maintainable. It's backyards, and it's, uh, kind of a, uh, area that can hold back some water, and cattails hold back water, and they don't ever dry out, so, uh, this would allow that area.
The issue there is, if it doesn't dry out, then it's creating mosquito haven.
There's that too, yep.
On top of it, so if it, if it gives us an air opportunity to control standing water in neighborhoods, it's only a good thing.
Yeah.
So, I, you have a recommendation?
Something I already have, one, one of the benefits with concrete liner is it's a lot harder to ever change your ditch grade. So to bring it back, say it got filled in with some debris or something, it's really easy to get your ditch back to.
With the concrete in it.
Back to work, because then you just have to bring skid steer in, we have the attachments for like, the sweeper blade, or attachment sweep for the skid steer. So it can be cleaned up very easily.
The longer.
And back to function.
It's, it's probably, yeah, it's probably, like you say, it's not grating, it's not leveling, so there's cattails, it's, there's lots of reasons why it's, you know, and I guess, it, it's a reasonable fix for a development. And it's, my only concern is, are we going to get pushback from residents with the additional scope of the project? So.
Was it, are these dishes in the front, or they?
They're in the backyard, they're in the backyard.
But it is, it affects quite a few homes, right?
It's the red there, Sharon, if you could see that, so.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine homes. So that, I mean, would that be, is that gonna be an issue where these other homes are gonna get, say, hey, I don't, I don't think I should pay for this, because I don't get any benefit from it? Are, are we gonna hear that? From these other homes, because this, this drainage, where, where does the drainage take everything?
Takes it to right there.
To right here?
It all comes, uh, it all goes into the red.
So water comes here, up to here?
Nope, nope, go back to about halfway down, go up just a hair more.
Here?
Right there, and then it goes over to that pond, go south underneath the roads to the pond, right, keep going, right, where are your, right there, yep, that's the pond.
So there's, this, the spillway goes right here and here?
There's no, no.
Or just here?
That's like a lot line green, there, unless I, I.
Because you got the concrete spillway marked right here.
Oh, okay, then that's where it goes across, I mistaken, I was off by.
So this area drains this way, and then drains into the pond?
Yeah, or it comes back around, uh, that eighty-eight, uh, not eighty-eight.
So over here?
Yeah, it comes back around there.
So all the residents in this area do benefit because this, all of this area drains here?
Yes.
So then they would all probably prefer to have that done, than have standing water.
I, I.
But, but, I mean, we haven't asked them, Dave might have asked them, but we don't. We'd have to ask him to know the answer to that question.
We can, we can hold the bids for another meeting, if he's gonna be at the next one.
Well, that's, well, the question is, if we don't approve it, is there still a chance we can get this construction done this year?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So, if we hold it for one more meeting.
It'd just be two more weeks.
Yep.
Okay, so, I think it would be important for us to get resident feedback.
Sure.
On the additional, this, additional scope.
Yes.
Of the project, before we actually approve it.
I agree.
Who's gonna handle that outreach?
Brian.
Okay, I'll take the action to, to work with Dave.
I'll, I'll work with.
Okay.
You and Dave to.
Yeah, because I just don't know when Dave's back in town.
I believe it's later this week, he's back, I believe it's Thursday, he's back in.
All right.
Give him a little time to adjust back.
Yep.
And I'll be talking to him tomorrow, so.
Perfect.
I'll greet him tomorrow.
It's, it's scope, it's, you know, it's really the cost, so, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just, uh, wait then, while we do that, okay?
Um, I believe you do have an open, or a motion made.
Is it still valid?
We're gonna approve it, I think we're just gonna postpone it now.
I'm just making sure you.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Next up?
Okay, next, let's, let's skip to the last one here, this two thousand nineteen park and rec, rec trails grant application update. I did receive an email from, uh, North Dakota Park and Rec. I did receive an email from North Dakota Park and Rec, and it just disappeared. And it says, please see the attached letter regards to your submitted fiscal year nineteen recreational trail application.
Am I looking for an email?
No, I just, I just pulled it up here. It says, a very good project, unfortunately the grant dollars only go so far. We hope you continue your efforts to make this project happen, thank you for your time and willingness to enhance the trail system in North Dakota. So, we didn't get the, or the city did not get the fiscal year 2019 RTP grant, so. Figured I'd update you with that. Last thing we have on the agenda is construction project status reports. We have Improvement District 2017-1, which is Lost River. They did the, Lost River has, they put the final curb and gutter in the third edition. Third edition today, planning on paving that next week. Landscape items are ongoing, that project has a potential completion within a couple of weeks. I, it may be more like three weeks, but then to get all the landscape and electrical stuff done, but that is the current schedule on that. Improvement District 2017-2, the SSL Fargo, they've got all the piping in from Lost River over to Conner Road seventeen. They got the piping along Conner Road seventeen back to lift station behind the Luther Church Inn. And the piping has been installed from that lift station all the way up to past the tree grove on Conner Road seventeen. They're anticipating, anticipating making connection to Fargo by the end of the week, Monday at the latest. They'll come back down and pick up the forest main at the intersection of, at the four-way stop. And continue that to the east and then south to the lagoons with anticipation of that taking a week and a half. So, that puts them about a week ahead of their June fifteenth completion date for the piping work. And it gives them some time to get the reclamation and some other stuff done. The panels for the lift stations will be installed within, starting this week is the last I was told. And then that'll continue until, until probably the completion, by the time they get the electrical services put in for the, for the Lakeview Heights lift station, so. That's a little update on that.
Was tree growth, the trees, was that an issue? Cause I seem to remember, like we were going to burrow or tunnel underneath the trees, so it was.
After some discussions with the landowners, through their, we were allowed, they granted us the easement to do it.
Oh, we did get the easement?
Christiansen Brothers gave us.
I was curious about that, that's why I thought I'd ask, cause it's, one day all of a sudden I see the trees gone, I went, oh, something changed.
Really opened it up, didn't it?
Wow, this is quite interesting.
Corridor got pretty wide.
Well, it really didn't pull up that many more trees, but it did pull up some, but I just thought it was interesting that that.
Right.
Change, yeah?
There was a lot of brush in there, not a lot of trees.
Oh, yeah.
It was really thick.
Maybe a dozen trees or something like that, not that many. So, but, so we got the easement and we don't have to pay for any replacements or anything like that, okay?
Water meter project, those plans and specifications are out to the bidding public. That bid will be opened up by June fourth, June fourth. The application for the funding has been at the Health Department for a couple of weeks now. So, they did verify last Friday that they had received that, everything looked to be in order, so that's a good sign on their end.
Good.
I have solicited quotes from six construction firms for the pedestrian crossing by Casey's. I, Earthwork Services is one of the ones I solicited, I solicited Glacier Enterprises, Earthwork Services, Northern Improvement Company, Construction, Key Contracting, and. There was a six.
You'll think of it later.
I got it, there was a sixth, and the bits, proposals or the requests for proposals are due back next Thursday afternoon. So, we will have something from you, for you at the next meeting regarding those proposals.
Yeah, I saw it in the forums.
Public notices today.
For the water meters, yes, that is part of the, part of the deal.
Yep.
Let me, give me two seconds, that's gonna bother me if I.